Turn it off. And I think that is what I needed to tell you with this gesture. So if you are willing, would you please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Harris, if you would please call the roll of numbers.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Malina.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
Hearing none, Mr. Harris. Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
The President Smith-Waddell.
Aye.
Thank you. Proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment period, reserved for those persons who have contacted the city clerk ahead of time in order to address counsel. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
All right. That would then move us to reports requested by counsel. I believe we have one.
Yes, we do. The Central Market Trust report.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor Sarachi, President Smith-Waddell, members of counsel, Mr. Harris, and members of the public. My name is Bruce Martin. I am the Chair of the Central Market Trust, serving in that position since July of this year, and waiting for Mr. Harris to bring that up for me. While we're waiting for that, what I wanted to talk to counsel about tonight, a little bit about our team, some of our pandemic and recovery activities and the fiscal impacts of those, some operational updates that counsel might be interested in, updates on our building preservation and maintenance activities, community engagements that we have been working with, and looking ahead to the future. So if you want to move to the third slide, please. And the next one. Next slide, please. This shows you a roster of the board. As you can see, we have 11 members of the board. We have two new officers, two new members of the board who joined in July, and that would be Joshua Lidle, who is our treasurer, and Elizabeth Guthridge, who's a member at large. Otherwise, you see the designated position, the officers, and the members at large. Like other boards, we try to attract volunteers to the board who bring various areas of expertise, whether it's finance, law, human resources, communications, things like that. And if we move to the next slide. We have two staff members for the Central Market Trust right now. Mary Goss, who is our manager of market operations. You all know Mary. She's here with us this evening. Mary's been with the trust almost from the very beginning and is one of our valued team members. The other staff person we have right now is Kathy Walksman. She's administrative assistant. She is currently also operating on a temporary basis as an assistant market manager due to a vacancy that we have in our manager of communications position. We are currently doing some staff realignment in relationship to the strategic plan that we discussed last year when we came to counsel, where we're hoping to add an executive director position. So we were hoping to do that first and then do some realignment with the position that we have. So we're still working on that. The other thing I wanted to mention was that we do rely a lot on volunteers. Aside from our board members, who are all volunteers, we have people who volunteer for the various committees, specifically the strategic, I'm sorry, the Standholder Review Committee and the Outreach Committee, which engages with the public in planning events and doing various other activities. And of course, every time you come to the market and you go to the information stand in the far corner, we have a volunteer there. So currently, we have about 25 active volunteers beyond the board members. The last group I'd want to mention, of course, is our Standholders Association, which organize our standholders, coordinates a lot of the advertising that the central market does, and participates in planning, executing community events. And we have a new president of that organization. Her name is Laura Lapp of Perfect Pots. Next slide, please. Seems like everybody's continuing to talk about the pandemic, and of course, we're no different. It was a couple of difficult months. Throughout the pandemic, our approach to COVID safety, COVID-19 safety has been based on the recommendations from the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Of course, we also are so appreciative of the help that we received from the city health officers and the Public Works Department. You know, Kim Whistler helped educate our standholders about things that they could do to make their operations safer. The Public Works Department helped us by making windows more easily open so that we can improve the air exchange within the market building, which makes all of our standholders and customers safer. And we appreciate all those efforts on the part of the city to help us during the last months. So as vaccines became available and medication approaches began to scale back somewhat, we also began the process of slowly updating our approaches. You can see here on this slide, I put a couple milestones down. We had suspended standholder attendance during the earliest parts of the pandemic. We resumed those in January. When the state mandated mitigation orders ended, we discontinued our use of door monitors and opened all of the doors to the public to come in. I'm really impressed by our community and people who are using their judgment to determine when they wear masks. We started meeting in person again in July as well, and we welcomed our new board members and had an orientation for them to talk about the market and its history. And I'm also happy to say that on October 2, on a very beautiful Saturday in Lancaster, we had harvest breakfast again, and I think we had close to a record turnout, if not a record turnout. It was a well-attended event. Everyone seemed very happy to be able to be outside on such a beautiful day and share the community experience. Next slide, please. So like everybody, the pandemic has had some fiscal impacts on the Central Market Trust. You can see from this graph, it's showing our operating revenues, which is the blue line, and our operating expenses. So as the pandemic hit in the late part of the first quarter of calendar year 2020, obviously, we took a bit of a dip in both revenues, and we were successfully able to reduce some A lot of the expenses that we incurred, though, related to the pandemic mitigation efforts occurred in fiscal year 2021, and as a result, you can see there that we actually had a little bit of a deficit in our operating fund for that year, which has been fortunately offset by the generosity of the Lancaster community, which you'll see on the next slide. For the first time, really, other than doing a capital campaign, we reached out to the community as the pandemic hit, knowing that we were going to be incurring costs to control access to the building, to monitor mask wearing, to do all of those things that the state health department was wanting us to do and that we felt we should do to make markets safer for our customers and for our standholders. So we actually sent out a request to many of our donors, and the response was almost immediate. As you can see, in 2020, the, that last quarter of our fiscal year, which is April to June, we had a huge outpouring of support from the community. On the prior slide, you noticed that we didn't have a deficit in that year. That's because, really, most of the cost pushed into 2021. But the fundraising that we did between that last quarter of our 2020 fiscal year and 2021, you know, have breached the gap in the operational expenses that we incurred for mitigation of the pandemic that are shown there. Next slide, please. I did want to share one major operational update that I think you would be interested in knowing and understanding, and this relates to changes in our lease relationship with standholders. We adopted this policy in July after working on it for about four to six months, trying to reach consensus on how we could implement this change that would be beneficial to both the trust, to the market, and to our standholders. The policy objectives were simply to make the application process easier for new standholders, whether they were coming in with a brand-new idea to a vacant stand-in market, or whether they were somebody who was acquiring an existing business that operated within the market and were coming in. In the past, historically, we would do something that was called a lease transfer, which was they would, the lease would automatically transfer to the name of the new owner of the business, and they would kind of be floundering around the market, you know. It would be assumed that the current owner would tell them what all the ins and outs of operating in market are, rather than what we do for a new standholder, which is an orientation process. So we are making everybody go through this whole new process of applying as if they're a new standholder. We're giving them an orientation if they're approved to come in to the market. It's not a given that an existing standholder would necessarily be able to transfer that stand to the new business owner. That would be a decision that we would make based on the things that we always look at when we bring. Does it align with the mix of products that our customers want and expect in market? Do they have business experience? Is their business plan viable? And does what they're proposing align with our missions and goals when looking at new lease agreements? One of the other key changes is, this gives some standholders flexibility, where they can terminate their lease with a 60-day notice, rather than waiting to the end of their lease term, which currently, under the old operation, was March 31st. So our Standholder Review Committee has been really busy. In the last 12 months, you can see some of the activity that they engaged in, including free lease transfers, which is no longer happening after July. But as of the end of our fiscal year, we had 67 stands in market and no vacancies. Now, I'm sure all of you have been reading the newspaper to know that Max, a very longtime standholder in the market, has decided to cease their operations to focus on a, on a market that they built on their farm down in the southern end. We've already started planning on that, and in fact, what the Standholder Review Committee is, has asked the board, is to have a little bit of extra time to consider, do we need to reevaluate our product mix? And if so, if not, we need to do some recruitment of produce stands in order to bring them into the market to maintain that current level of produce that we provide. So in the interim, we have approved the plan for them to lease that space on a temporary, under temporary leases, so that it's not vacant during the holidays. And this will give some of our existing standholders additional opportunity over the holidays to utilize that space and make some more money. Next slide, please. There's a beautiful market, the tower roof that everyone so recognizes when they look at market, and our doors. So counsel will remember, of course, that we've now have entered into agreement to finance the replacement of the tower roofs with tile and to start a program of replacing the doors. We've been working with both the city and Hamel Architects to get the information they need to put this initiative out for bid. And just as a side note, I list there the doors that will be in Phase 1 of the door replacement. It's expected that this will be quite an expensive project to replace these original doors. So our, our plan is to do that over five years, and starting with four that are in the most need of repair. So doors 2, 9, 11, and 12 should be in Phase 1. Next slide, please. For many people, Lancaster Central Market is the heart of Lancaster community. But with that said, we like to also engage with other entities from time to time, and I wanted to call a lot of few of those things. We've continued to share our streetscape around market with various adjoining restaurants so that folks can enjoy outdoor dining activities, particularly during the nicer months. This is not an easy process, especially on a market day, when standholders are trying to deliver products. Sometimes that comes during the day, at the beginning of the day, at the end of the day. And, you know, really, it has been working, by and large, very well. We have good neighbors, and we've appreciated working with them, and I hope they've been appreciative of working with us. I think it has added a nice environment around the market. People seem to really enjoy having lunch right outside the market. We've been meeting with Lancaster Equity on an intermittent basis to discuss areas of collaboration that we can engage in as they reopen the southern market. We're looking forward to that and the opportunities that will provide to both organizations. We continue to partner with Leeds. For many years, they've planned, done the planters around the market. This past holiday, they've gone a little further. They've done all the decorating within the market, and I'm happy to report that they plan to do so again this year. We collaborated with Loop to promote the Red Rose Run, and we're thankful that they continue to make the market a beneficiary of money raised during that, that program. We've partnered with F&amp;M to start an organic recycling program. I don't believe that F&amp;M's any, involved any longer. However, the program is continuing, and it seems to be successful. And then the last thing I just wanted to point out was that we specifically worked with our Standholders Association and developed a media toolkit for them to help them make better use of social media and central market branding to promote their businesses and expand the business opportunities that they have. And my last slide. Looking ahead, as I mentioned before, the strategic plan we discussed last year, we have created the new position for executive director. We are continuing to work on that effort. We are also continuing efforts related to increased fundraising for both building improvements, maintenance, and program development. We hope that those efforts will continue to receive the warm support that they have thus far. We are also looking for continued efforts with other community partners, particularly as we implement our strategic plan. We think that there's some agencies that we could partner with quite nicely to help us accomplish all of our objectives. And then I think the other thing that is most important is, we're really looking to do some additional events via the market to bring attention to Lancaster, the community that it serves, and provide a, a warm, welcoming place for all to come and celebrate everything that our lush Lancaster County farm land provides us. Are there any questions from counsel?
Counsel Diaz, please.
I do have just one question. Did you find any resistance with the Amish community in regards to the CDC guidelines, whether it's wearing masks, or obviously, they don't believe in shots, but just curious to know what the dynamic was?
One of the, one of the key rules of anyone who operates in the market is that they have to comply with health directives. So while I, I don't want to speak for what their personal beliefs were or are, what I can say is that while there was an order in effect from the governor, all of our standholders were complying with it. Some, obviously, people are people, some were so than others, but I think it's safe to say that, you know, we continued to work with ones who were having difficulty complying with the guidelines and made sure that all of them were in compliance. That's part of their condition for being there, and I, they all understood that, and they weren't willing to sacrifice their operation within the market on that issue.
Thank you.
So I just want to thank you. I think the central market provides an opportunity for so many families to have healthy food options, and also, I think it's something that's pivotal to our community, and I think a lot of organizations have been challenged over the past year, and there's value in cross-sector knowledge sharing. So I'm curious, from your perspective, what are some of the key learnings that you've had over the past year?
Well, from, from a personal perspective, I'll say, it reminds me to always be thankful for everything that I have and for the people and the community that I live in. As I mentioned during that presentation, we've always gone to the community with an ask when it was for a specific thing, you know, replacing, you know, the 25,000-square-foot slate roof on our building, or, because the normal operations of the market, we worked toward, to make that all self-sustaining. But what I found is that people are good, people rally around when there's a hardship, most people. And I was really gratified by the confidence that the public has placed in us to, you know, respond with their, with their hard-earned dollars to support the various mitigations that we, you know, needed to implement, so that we were able to come through this, you know, on a solid financial footing. So I also know that our board and our staff worked exceptionally hard. Our contract maintenance crew worked exceptionally hard to do the extra work that we needed them to do, you know, hours that, you know, that Mary spent, you know, in the market trying to make sure everybody was complying, and, yeah. So, you know, it's a, it was a team effort, and I think, so the great lesson there is, when we work together, we can accomplish things that seem impossible to accomplish by ourselves. So, you know, it, it made me really proud to be part of the central market team and, and to, you know, be in a position where I can, you know, for however long, help guide that effort.
Yeah, that's really great, and I appreciate you sharing that. I think you have a very small but mighty team, but I always question how you all get everything accomplished, so I appreciate you sharing that that's the truth. And then you brought up something else for me, is what is the racial diversity makeup of your board? And as you're looking for an executive director, are you centering racial equity in that search
The racial composition of the board, I know we have at least, you know, two women Yeah, that's what I would say at this point. We have two women of color. That is, you know, diversity on our board is, is one of our strategic goals, to, to increase that. And I will say that we, we're hoping to have a slightly broader reach this year in getting people to submit resumes for board service on the Central Market Trust. It is a small board. We're, you know, we're limited on how many people we can have, but, and I said, we're trying to find people who have certain expertise, but, you know, we would, you know, to make the process more open, I think, is something that we're looking to do this coming cycle. So probably early next year, we'll be using social media to reach out and let people know that we're, we're interested in looking for board members. And I don't remember the second part of the question.
So you said that you're in the process of considering or looking at the possibility of.
The executive director.
Correct.
We're, we're still, after having gone through a round, we're still trying to narrow our focus on what it is that we feel will make that person most successful in this position and meet the needs that the trust needs moving forward. We have a very ambitious strategic plan, and some of that revolves around, obviously, raising money beyond just our operational expenses to supplement programs that we think could be beneficial to the community at large. So that has been a focus, so I don't think that we've been specifically looking to recruit people of any specific, you know, group, but we would certainly, we have, you know, we are certainly interested in anyone who brings the qualifications that we're looking for. And because we're a small staff, you know, they also, yeah, it's, they're going to have to pick up things on top of just doing what we would normally probably think of an executive director doing.
Thank you. Other counsel comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to interim reports of committees of counsel. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Excellent. So we can move then right into our budget agenda, to our legislative agenda. We begin with the legislative budget transfers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As you are aware, the city is self-insured for workers' compensation costs. Every year, funds to pay workers' compensation claims are included in the individual department budgets, but those claims are paid from the administrative services budget. So on a quarterly basis, we shift money from the departments where those injured workers have made claims to the administrative services budget to cover the cost. For the third quarter of the year, workers' comp claims were made by city firefighters and public work staff members. A total of $35,335.08 is being moved from those departments' budgets to administrative services. Because this money is being moved between departments, this requires city council approval. So I make the motion to approve the third quarter workers' compensation transfers totaling $35,335.08 as proposed.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Are there counsel comments on the budget transfers? From the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Waddell.
Aye. Thank you, Counsel Baker. All right. That moves us to items for consideration under the Heritage Conservation District. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Considering the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission to improvements to properties within the Heritage Conservation District, the first is Heather Hoffman, owner of 539 East Orange Street, proposes demolition of a brick garage at the rear of a parcel facing East Marion Street to create off-street parking spaces. The second is WY Enterprises LLC, owner of 210 West Grand Street, which proposes installation of stacked shipping containers between existing buildings at 210 and 214 West Grand Street. And both of those applications are recommended for, for approval by the Historical Commission.
Motion is approved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I presume to take the two items together? Great. We have a motion and a second. Since they were both recommended for approval, I don't know that we need a presentation. Are there counsel comments on the motion? And from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Waddell.
Aye, thank you. All right, that brings us to ordinances for final passage. Administration Bill Number 212021. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. In ordinance of the council, the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, amending section 26221, 28586, 28591, and 28593 of the Code of the City of Lancaster, and rescinding and repealing sections 28590 and 94 of the Code of the City of Lancaster to refine terms and to clarify and provide that street cleaning and street sweeping regulations apply to snow clearing from such spaces that alternate side of street parking during street cleaning will not be authorized when street cleaning, as newly defined, is implemented, providing for the severability of the ordinance, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinance, and providing that the ordinance will take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Soto?
Yes, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the meeting, the first meeting, city council on November 9th, please.
Second.
Second.
And the reason for the postponement would be to gather more information from the public on some of the amendments to the ordinance. Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Soto. We have a motion and a second. I am seeing Director Campbell's hand raised. Please.
Yes, thank you very, very much. Thank you for asking for the tabling. We actually are asking for it to be tabled to November 23rd, four weeks from tonight. The reason being that at the last meeting, at the last council meeting, we heard a lot of very important comments about the challenges of parking, should we put that ordinance into place the way we had described it? And we are actually finding some very good solutions to being able to address those parking concerns. But we'd like to get them far enough along so that they're actual solutions. As many of you may know, the southeast and the southwest have the greatest challenge in terms of parking and parking opportunities and alternatives. And so we are exploring some of the solutions that have been successful in the past, in previous years, whether it's working with not-for-profit organizations, with the school district, and other entities to be able to find viable, actual, and committable solutions to parking so that when people do, are asked to be able to move their cars, to be able to facilitate better snow clearance and better street clearance, there's actually places for them to move those cars. We believe solidly that the proposed amendments are very, very appropriate. The key sticking point, as far as we're concerned, is that, is where do people put their cars on those first day or day or two or three after a snow, where there really generally aren't yet enough places to move them, and the streets have not yet fully been cleared. But we do believe that there are a lot of benefits to the legislation as proposed. We just want to be able to work with and meet with several other members of the community and have a couple of more discussions about how to actually make work an alternative that will be workable for the City of Lancaster.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Council, because we have had a motion and a second, my thinking is we should defeat that, we should vote down this one and propose another one? Or would you be open to a friendly, can we do a sort of a friendly amendment thing here?
I think Mr. Soto can amend his motion to change the date.
Council President, I'd like to make a change to my postponement proposal to the end of the month.
Okay, so-
The 27th, right? I'm sorry, to the 23rd.
November 23rd.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Again, council comments on the motion to amend?
Just one comment, Mr. President.
Please.
I just want to thank you, Director, and everyone else involved in the city, but also Darlene, because I think you raised this question initially at the beginning of the month. And I appreciate the intention behind passing something that is both worthwhile for the community at large, but is taking steps to acknowledge the impact that it could have that we did not anticipate before. So I think it's a good way of us including the voices of residents, who sometimes bring a perspective that adds value. And I want to thank you as well, Pete, for making sure that we're on the right track for this.
Thank you, Counselor. Other council comments? Other comments from the public on the motion to postpone?
I just want to say that we are working with Mr. Steve Campbell. We have a meeting already set up in our neighborhood to invite residents that have input, and I think it is a good thing. And we already have our meeting, I think, November the 4th? Yes, so we have a meeting set up, but we're pulling residents together with solutions.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Bird. Any others? Hearing none, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. And to clarify, this is to table to a date certain on to the November 23rd meeting. Mr. Arroyo?
Aye.
Ms. Beckett?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Thank you all very much. That has been tabled to the November 23rd meeting of council, which, if you're playing along at home, is the second full meeting of the month. That brings us to administration bill number 222021. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. In ordinance of the city council, the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations of $5 million of American Rescue Plan Act proceeds received in 2021, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the severability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance.
We need to bring it to the table first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please go ahead, Counselor Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President. I hereby move to amend section 3 of the ordinance to read as follows. The appropriate officers of the City of Lancaster be and hereby are authorized and directed to utilize $5 million of the ARPA funds received from the U.S. Treasury for the purposes set forth in section 2 above, after receiving approval for each such use by resolution of city council adopted from time to time in section 2, number 2, to read as follows: Providing funding to one or more economic and/or community development corporations, authorities, or not-for-profit corporations, or similar entities for the development, continuation, modification, and implementation of programs and projects to increase the supply and conservation of affordable and high-quality living units within the City of Lancaster.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend administration bill number 222021. My understanding of the amendment, not being a lawyer, but is the reflection of the city administration's honoring council's desire to remain engaged in the authorization and expenditure of ARPA funds even as they are isolated for affordable housing. So plainly put, these $5 million would be set aside specifically for the purpose of affordable housing as described in the amendment that Counselor Arroyo just read. And individual projects on which that $5 million would be spent would come to council and then be authorized by resolution if they were to go forward with our authorization to use said funding. Is that correct? Great. Council comments on the motion to amend?
Council President?
Please.
Thank you. I'm appreciative of this, of this amendment to this ordinance. I think it also gives the public increased ability to hear about and make comments on projects as they're brought forward. So I'll just make a reminder to the public that resolutions come up through committee meetings of council, which occur on the first Monday generally of every month, and then we read them at a regular council meeting. So that gives two opportunities at least each time for the public also to engage in these projects, and we look forward to them doing that.
Excellent. Other council comments? Other comments from the public on the motion to amend? Ms. Bird?
I just want to thank council for that amendment, to have that extra oversight. I mean, I think it's something that the public was asking for, and not just saying money's set aside, but that it does come back to you. I think that is a good amendment to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. Any other public comments?
I just have one, Council President, if I may?
Mayor.
Which is just to say thank you to council for helping us collaboratively figure out how we're going to do this. We've never done it before, and I appreciate the back and forth. And so, here we go.
That's mutual, Mayor, thank you. All right, in that case, on the motion to amend, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Arroyo?
Aye.
Ms. Beckett?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye, and I want to take a moment to thank not only the administration, but also Counselor Arroyo for their leadership in this to date and going forward. All right, and now we have, we have an amended administration bill number 22 on the floor. Counselor Beckett?
Thank you very much. So we obviously heard a very robust presentation about the housing needs of our community during the last meeting, and it's not a topic that we haven't spoken about before. So I am glad that we're bringing these funds forward with the newly amended ordinance that will allow council to have oversight over these funds, but makes a bold stake in making a difference in the affordable housing in our community. It is a small amount, but it is one of the largest steps that we've taken, and it's not going to be the last. Is there anything further from the administration on this? No? Okay. Director Delft?
Good evening, council. Don't worry, I'm not sitting down to give a presentation. I know that we had a very extensive presentation two weeks ago and extensive dialogue. I appreciate the comments and the questions that we received from council. I think it improved the outcome. I appreciate the questions and the comments we received from the community members as well. I do have the presentation to reference if we need to answer any questions. The only thing I think I would add at this time is to pick up on the theme that you mentioned, Counselor Beckett. We have an opportunity to do, to make some historic changes in the city. Not only do we have these ARPA funds that we're appropriating, the $5 million for affordable housing, I also wanted to note for council that there are additional home program funds that have been allocated to the county consortium. We partner with the county on allocating those particular home funds. We do get an annual allocation of home funds, but we have received news that we're going to get additional ARPA home funds. It is a total of, let me, let me double-check this, make sure I have this right. For the city and the county together, it's $6.7 million in additional ARPA home funds. And based upon the formula that divides up that funding, it works out to about an additional $2 million in home funding for the city over a five-year period. So we're also going to be working with that set of funding as well. So I just wanted to share that good news. We'll have more information about that process moving forward, but it's very much connected to the overall approach that we're taking and utilizing the interim housing strategy to direct where these funds go over the next five years.
Thank you, Director. Any other council comments?
I just have a question, President. With that said, is that something that we would also include? The proposal that Darlene Bird has brought forward to city council, and I think everybody has heard about it, and has received the project?
So I actually can address this specifically. So I spoke with Ms. Bird this afternoon, and she identified a separate but adjacent opportunity that South End Concerned Neighbors had to preserve affordable housing in the southeast, and in particular, to turn a renter household into the owner of a particular property, which obviously has all of those, all of the vaunted wealth generation benefits accorded to it. So that, this pocket of funds could, yes, very well include that project, which would be brought to council by resolution at some point while these funds are being spent. And then the adjacent project, which is less specifically affordable housing and more community development, we anticipate taking up in the first quarter of 2022, which I believe, though of course I cannot speak for each individual member of this August body, which I believe councilors are eager to support. So that's my understanding. Ms. Bird, if you'd like to take no more than three minutes to address Counselor Diaz's question, you may.
First, I want to thank council because South End has met with you all and asked for your support. And we met and put a lot of tireless hours into this. As you know, South End is a volunteer organization, so all of the energy and the time that we put in is for the betterment of the community. Yes, we were, our main goal was to get that housing addressed. We do understand affordable housing is a priority within the city. And knowing that we could present a resolution quickly, we would like to have the hub done today, but we were also told about winter coming in construction, that it would be best if we did, you know, if we're ready to go in the first quarter of the year. So, and we met with the mayor also, we talked to her. But I really want to thank council because you were there, you listened, you heard, and we, as a community, believe that. You heard us, and you're going to be accountable for these ARPA monies and where they go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird, and thank you, Counselor Diaz. Any other council comments? Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris?
On the motion to approve. Mr. Arroyo?
Aye.
Ms. Beckett?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Malina?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell?
Aye. Counselors, you should, well, I wouldn't say you should celebrate, but I think you should acknowledge that you are now part of the largest direct investment Lancaster City has made in affordable housing. It certainly will not be the last, but this is not nothing. And I want to thank you and the community for your support in moving in this direction. It really is a collaborative effort. All right. Let's, and on that subject, I can step off of my soapbox, and we can move to administration resolution number 582021. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. The resolution of the city council, the City of Lancaster, authorizing the proper officials of the city, proper officers of the City of Lancaster to expend $995,000 of the city's fiscal recovery funds received from the United States Department of the Treasury to fund the acquisition of 838 Marietta Avenue by the city and/or Housing Development Corporation, Mid-Atlantic, for the purpose of developing such property into multiple affordable housing units. Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Arroyo, please.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is meant to allow the City of Lancaster to enter in a purchase agreement, purchase option agreement, in order to purchase the property known as 838 Marietta Avenue for $995,000, with the intention of entering in an agreement with HDC Mid-Atlantic to title the property and develop it as affordable housing. I'd invite Director- I'd invite Director Delft, if there's anything additional you would like to add for the details of the resolution.
Certainly. Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Just wanted to say a few words about the proposal itself. It is very early in the development process of that particular site. We are truly at just the acquisition phase at this point. The administration and city council have seen an opportunity to gain control of that property in order to develop for affordable housing. So we still have a lot of decisions to make about what the actual design of that site will look like in the future. We have had some preliminary conversations with HDC Mid-Atlantic to get a sense of what could be possible on that site. The concept that is on the table right now is looking at a multifamily building in the range of 46 to 50 units. The administrative resolution speaks to a desire for a minimum of 20 units because we don't know yet how many we're actually going to be able to develop on that site. And it is focused particularly on an income level of 40% of the area median income to 80% of the area median income. So that's where we are in the early process. But as I said, a lot more to figure out in the process with HDC.
Excellent. Are there other, I have some questions, but are there other council comments or questions on the bill?
Council President, I have a question, please.
Counselor Bakay, then Counselor Soto.
Just a piece of clarification, Director Delft, just so that the public has this knowledge and we understand the property that we're speaking about. This is currently a parking lot. Is that right?
It is currently a parking lot. Correct.
So there's no structure or anybody living on this particular property?
Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. I should have started there. The parcel is on the south side of the 800 block of Marietta Avenue. It is directly across the street from the UPMC St. Joseph's campus. It is on, sort of, the parking lot is on the northwestern corner of that block. At least that's how most people experience it, looking at the site.
Thank you.
Counselor Soto.
Yes, I'm inquiring, how big is, how many acres is there? How big is that area?
Is it like one acre, .75? Okay.
And how many homes do you think you actually fit in there with parking and everything else?
Including the parking on site, we're estimating, and this is a very early estimate, but 46 to 50 apartment units.
Thank you.
If that may, Council President?
Of course.
Director Delft, as far as the timeline that's concerned, when do we expect potentially development to happen? What's next steps need to occur for development to get started?
That's a great question.
Assuming the purchase goes through?
Yes, assuming that the purchase moves forward, this particular project is not imminent. We are looking at this as part of a larger effort and partnership with HDC Mid-Atlantic. This would actually be Phase Three of work that has been ongoing. So you may remember from previous meetings that our Phase One is focused on 213 College Avenue, which is on the eastern side of College Avenue, across the street from UPMC. Phase Two of the affordable housing work is actually an additional apartment building on the southeast corner of the UPMC campus. And then ultimately, this parcel, 838 Marietta Avenue, would be Phase Three of that work. We just got really wonderful news recently that the project at 213 College Avenue was awarded low-income housing tax credits. So that is very rare for a project to be awarded on the first cycle through. It was really held up as a model project at the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. So we're thrilled to get that news. That means that that project can move forward immediately, and then hopefully that clears the way for Phase Two and then ultimately Phase Three.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that it's not indefinite when Phase Three would need to happen. We have had a conversation with HDC that there is a clawback provision that if the property is not developed within seven years, that the property's ownership would revert to the city of Lancaster.
Is that, just humor me, is that breaking ground or completion?
I think that project underway means financing is in hand, and there's a timeline to at least start. I want to just be mindful that so much of this process is dependent on the LIHTC credits. And as Director Delft pointed out, the fact that this project received credits the first time around is very significant. Just diagonal, the long home, they had to go through three cycles, which is the average, which means three years, to get LIHTC credits. So we want to be flexible, and we also wanted to make sure that the land was acquired. And it is an asset. It has value. And if, for some reason, that project is not moving forward, that clawback provision would go into effect.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Diaz?
I just have one question, and I guess I'm going fast in my brain, like seeing it already and getting bids. Do we know along the line, like, who's going to be producing these apartments? Who's going to be part of the equation?
In terms of the actual tenants of the apartment buildings?
No, no, parts of building.
Contractors.
Construction. Contractors.
No, we don't yet at this time.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Diaz?
From the public.
My name is Jonathan Brown. I live over 209 North Lime Street. I just had a question that is, we've been talking a lot about all of the varying things that would be done for affordable housing with the $5 million and all this. So I'm really pleased with all of that. That's exciting. My question is, based on any past experience, I realize none of these properties are done yet. This purchase hasn't been completed. What are the, with affordable housing projects like that, do we have any track record of, as we move into these many projects, what the ongoing costs are to the city taxpayers to continue to maintain these? Or is the city's cost only to help purchase and start the projects, and then there are no ongoing city taxpayer costs?
Thank you for the question. Each of the housing development projects that we work on may be a different model. In most cases, the land development that is happening in the city is primarily private development, private land transactions. In this particular case, we would be acquiring the property, but then the property would move into the hands of HDC Mid-Atlantic. So there would not be an ongoing cost to the taxpayer, as you described.
Mr. Delft, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Do we foresee for that site that we would need any significant changes to in-ground infrastructure, such as water or sewer? Obviously, the building has to be built, and it has to be attached to existing infrastructure. But do we foresee a large amount of infrastructure development pertaining to those 50 units that would be different from other infrastructure development in the area?
We have not gotten there yet.
Okay.
It is possible that we'll have to upgrade the underground infrastructure as part of the development. We look at that with any land development, and then our staff will advise the developer on what changes would need to be made.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Ms. Bird.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Number one, so Phase One, Phase Two, and this is Phase Three. When are we actually looking to see affordable housing in the city?
I'm sorry, Ms. Bird. Could you repeat the question?
I said we have Phase One of the project, Phase Two, and now Phase Three. Phase One has not been completed, so we don't have affordable housing yet. Phase Two is not completed. We're getting ready to spend $995,000 just to acquire. When will we actually see affordable homes for people to move in? And what concerned me is I heard the mayor say, well, if it's not started in seven years, the property will go to the city. We don't need the property. I thought the whole resolution was about getting this affordable housing that's needed now.
Right. This, for any new affordable housing unit, so we usually talk about it as preservation or protection of existing units, which is part of the strategy. But then there's also the production part of new units. So for any of the buildings where we're doing new construction, production of new units, it does take a few years for that to go from concept to the tenants actually living in those apartments. In the case of 213 College Avenue, which we just spoke about, that's a total of 64 units. And I'm going to turn around here to HDC and see we have estimated timeline, just ballpark.
2023.
And so for anyone who could not hear that, the first phase of 64 units, we would be looking at delivery of those units in 2023.
And what if, 64? And Phase Two would be?
We're not sure yet until we have decisions about.
But it would be after 2023. They would be the first ones, basically.
That would be the next phase, and we would not have a definitive timeline until we have a decision about the low-income tax credits.
Because, you know, like you said, we're addressing affordable housing, you know, wait in five years. People need housing now, and we understand it takes time. But my other question was more or less about understanding the process. We just voted on ordinance, well, I guess administrative bill 2021, and we have a resolution already. So I'm just wondering, like, so is the process, I guess your committee meets the Monday before. Mr. Arroyo, a resolution can be brought to you and possibly go to council at the next council meeting? Because I don't see how we had a resolution, and we didn't even have the administrative bill passed. And that's just not my understanding. So I just need someone to explain how that could happen.
Oh, yeah, I can do that real quick.
Okay, thank you.
So the short version is, this was a project that we had previously been looking at. And you remember in its original iteration that there was a proposal that the projects be part of the allocation itself. So based on the community feedback, we took the allocation and authorized, essentially authorized ourselves to authorize by resolution. And so now we are resolving. So because this one was a pre-existing project, my understanding broadly, and I know that there's work on an RFP process going forward, is that, yes, if a project would be considered at a committee meeting, it could then be moved out of committee and to the following council meeting. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bird. I saw Joey stand up first. Mr. Dastra, my apologies.
You're fine. Joey is fine. Joey Dastra, 100 Block, North Plum Street. Just from my own understanding, the mayor brought up the clawback provision. So the money that we're putting forward for this project, is HDC Mid-Atlantic going to be the ones that own, develop, and operate it?
Correct.
Okay. And then what does that mean in terms of taxation for the property?
So HDC Mid-Atlantic is a nonprofit affordable housing developer, but my understanding is that each parcel must be declared and applied for as fulfilling a charitable use under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So for example, if you look at the UPMC property, while UPMC remains a registered nonprofit, once the parcel ceased to be used for a viable charitable purpose, it became taxable once again. And then that's the limits of my understanding. And I think any further questions would be best directed to either Dana or, is it Claude? Yep.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Soldier.
When would you anticipate closing on the property transaction, assuming?
We had an option to purchase through the end of this month, which was driving our timeline. I believe that we need to close by November 26th, so the end of November.
And often, government entities are required to do an independent appraisal or two prior to a land purchase. Is that the case here? Whether it is or not, do you anticipate doing an independent appraisal?
That was conducted, and that appraisal is available.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soldier. Anyone else? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Melina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our second public comment period. Open for comment about issues not addressed on the agenda. The rules are as follows. Please give your name, identify the block of your residence before proceeding with your comment, and please keep your comments two, three minutes in length. Would anybody like to make a public comment?
Joey Dastra, 100 Block, North Plum Street. Obviously, we talked about affordable housing tonight. I was just curious what other issues that city residents are looking to use the ARPA funds for. Are there anything in specific that you guys are excited to talk about?
I will broadly let counselors address that in the council comment section. I will say that the big buckets that we've seen are, of course, affordable housing, workforce development, infrastructure improvements with a tendency towards streetscaping. Everybody wants to see their sidewalks get better and the potholes get fixed. We've also seen some interest in environmental infrastructure and a surprising, though not undue, amount of interest in what ARPA funds can be used to support childcare. That being said, like I said, I'll let individual counselors answer that, if they like, during the council comment section of the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dastra. Anyone else? All right. In that case, I will move us to the report of the mayor. Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Over the past few months, we've started this process of prioritizing community concerns to address with the $39.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to the city of Lancaster. And I just want to say thank you to council for engaging this conversation and determining our next steps. As we have talked about throughout the month, housing issues are a priority for many of us and our neighbors. And currently, affordable housing is the most voted priority through our engagement on ARPA funds that has reached more than 500 people over the past two months to date. It feels noteworthy tonight to be devoting the first round of ARPA funding to housing, thus the applause earlier. And we will continue to work with city council on a process for allocating additional funds for housing in the coming weeks. I'm grateful for our collective work over these past several months. And this is definitely a start we're celebrating, so thank you again. October 30th will be the last day to submit comments at engage.cityoflancasterpa.com. And I encourage city residents who have not given input about their ideas related to how to utilize ARPA funds to submit their responses online. Our engagement team will prepare a report of the results to share with council and the community on November 9th. And this information will help us guide future investments. But first, the 2022 budget. City staff are hard at work preparing the 2022 budget, which will be presented to council on November 23rd, followed by budget hearings on Saturday, December 11th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Additionally, I want to provide council an update regarding a meeting with landlords that happened in council chambers last night. It was a full house, and I was grateful that so many came to learn about what we are thinking regarding changes to the lead hazard control. regarding changes to the Lead Hazard Control Ordinance rental licensure and inspection process. Thursday evening, we'll be meeting with childcare providers across the city to also address the Lead Hazard Control Ordinance. It underscored, this meeting underscored the commitment of our staff to wading through detail after detail regarding potential processes, our commitment to efficiency, and most of all, our commitment to ensuring the health and well-being of children through prevention efforts. It also underscored the unique partnership between the city and Penn Medicine Lancaster General Health. We're hoping to bring an ordinance to you, we were hoping to bring an ordinance to you next month for consideration, however, we are still exploring various options and soliciting feedback from the public. All this to say is that there is more to come, and I look forward to updating you in the coming months as our team and community of landlords, tenants, and childcare providers work together to address lead hazards in our midst. And that concludes my report tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings us to the report of the President of Council. Okay, briefly, hold on. Want to make sure that I get this right. As I did with Mr. Terry Brown at the beginning of the previous council meeting, I want to acknowledge the passing of two former members of this August body. Anthony Zigment, who was a counselor in the 1960s, his work led us to having the city's first historic districts, and initiated a long tradition of work in historical preservation. And perhaps more nearly at mind, John Lyons passed away recently, and, you know, if, if you knew John, I think you probably knew a lot about his accomplishments, but perhaps most relevant to the current moment, he supported the 1991 amendment to the Discrimination Ordinance, which would include prohibitions on discrimination based on marital status and sexual preference, which put the City of Lancaster far ahead of many other small cities in the Commonwealth, and that deserves recognition. I also want to thank Mr. Harris for providing me with information relevant to that. That concludes my report for this evening. We move then to council comments.
Council President?
Please.
And this is to directly address, Mr. Dastra, your question, I think that's great. I, I think that the Council President did a good job of summarizing the priorities and, and where we saw the most feedback, of all the feedback that we've been getting in the community, which has been great. I just also wanted to add that I'm personally excited to hear, and hopefully it will be soon, how the County of Lancaster plans to spend their, I believe, $106 million of ARPA money. So that is important to me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker.
Council President, if I may?
Of course.
Just kind of in light of the same line, I do want to thank Director Delft for engaging in conversation and thinking through what the process looking forward is going to be for future affordable housing projects. So I'm very looking forward to those coming to council and potentially adding more affordable hu, not potentially, adding, for sure, adding more affordable housing here in the City of Lancaster. And also knowing that $5 million could be just the beginning, and thinking about long-term sustainable solutions that Lancaster City can use to address housing issues, as we know that this problem will not go away anytime soon, and how we can address those problems moving forward. So thank you, Director Delft, and to your team, and I'm looking forward to engaging with the public on this process moving forward.
Everyone else has pretty much said everything about the priorities, but I think for me, Mr. Dastra, one of the things that is so unique about this opportunity is that there's so many neighborhoods in our community that have systematically and intentionally in our past lacked resources, so the fact that we have this pool of funds to really be intentional about how we're appropriating funds for those communities is a unique opportunity, whether that's in infrastructure, whether that's in housing, for us to take an intentional look of how we do equity work in appropriating these funds, I'm really excited for.
And I think I want to thank the community, because the community has stepped up and has really gave and voiced their opinion of what their needs are, and that's what's important, to come together so we can collaborate and see what we need to do to build Lancaster better. And I think everybody has said the same thing, so I want to just say thank you and thank all the council members and the mayor and all the administration working with our community that has voiced their, their needs.
Thank you. Provided there are no other council comments, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.